Okay. So, seeing the forum of the Board of Education gathered today on August 7th, at 6:29, at the Innovation Center for the purpose of having a closed meeting in order to confirm, please, discuss the UGP that's been, that's in our agenda. A call and a meeting ordered, in order to record who is present, I request that additional individuals state this or her name in session with the district. Derek Croft, a board member.
Jason Neim is a board member.
Sean Shuong is a board member.
Jay Cipriani?
Tim Kilroy-Indrum superintendent.
All right, you guys know.
That's a stronger board member.
Mike Houston, a board member.
Mike Noel, a board member.
Kathy Anderson, the captain assistant.
Okay. All right, as we know, we've had a couple meetings on this, on the UGP, and we're trying to come to resolve, first of all, the topic of this, of this UGP. Some, some materials have yet to be transmitted to [BLEEP]. Also, there were assessments that have been mentioned as to what, you know, what questions were asked of the students, and I think we want to continue this from last session there. So.
Can I jump in? I have the assessments. I didn't know if you wanted them in closed session or not. Quite frankly, I, I didn't get the feeling that all the assessments were wanted. I thought they were wanting to have the discussion more of the board. So, I have a folder of assessments that Erica has given me, and I can get those to you, but I just, the way that I interpreted last meeting was maybe get the full group in here for the discussion and take it that way. So, that's why it is not put forward to you, but I've had them since three days after that meeting.
And Craig, I'm on Tim and Darren. The purpose of this next session now is not to discuss the UGA as much. It's got, whatever. What, I mean, Jesus.
You have our agreements.
You have our agreements, yes. But to determine the direction of the board, to go on this next session, there's two, there's two things at the table. To uphold the previous decision or to remove it from mandatory curriculum.
Right.
Right? Those are the two things that in discussions you want publicly, we have to determine. Now, we, the board, am I correct there?
Yes, that is correct.
Tim's, Erica?
It is my mistake.
And this we got from Steve Ricker and our return.
Okay.
So, just want to make sure everyone knows that, you know, the role of board and decision.
All right. So then, I guess, we need to make a decision as to how we're moving forward with the curriculum.
Can you back up real quick? What, what, I wasn't at the last meeting where it was discussed. What was the final outcome from that?
The final outcome from that meeting was that we, we wanted to see the assessments and, and that we, we talked about, uh, missing piece, uh, missing document that was, that was not, wasn't found or transmitted and transmitted to Mr. Ricker.
And the rest is, speaking of the board, the board felt four members were present only, and they felt out of respect to the board members who weren't there. They felt that they'd push it back, not push it off, but wait two weeks. They felt they could wait two weeks to get more, more, oh, the board president could make it.
Correct.
Make it. Correct.
To be, to be more consolidated.
Yeah.
As a board, as a board moving forward, we're such a young board, moving forward together instead of making decisions, that we, we didn't like to perception that if four people voted, that we wanted everybody there.
So, that's why, so there was very little discussion.
Yeah.
Discussion.
To be clear, are you, you're referring to July? That's who we met the previous time in May?
We're referring to the first part of July.
July, okay.
It was in July.
So, the meeting we both missed.
Yes. Twenty-four board members.
We're going, okay.
Yeah.
I'm trying to catch up.
No, you're a hundred percent, thank you, so I apologize.
No, no. That's your fact.
Four people, president, board, so, well, this is postponing to the August 7th work.
And here we are today with the exact same issue and the, the issue with.
Same scenario on the, the [BLEEP]. What if they have, you know, I, I don't, I didn't look in my notes. I don't know [BLEEP].
It's the, uh, it was the document on what, what was the piece that balanced that, that topic? That, that piece was missing. Uh, that was supposed, that was mentioned to [BLEEP] and to us that there was a piece that was presented by the teachers to balance Just Mercy being taught.
With the regress for them a little bit to talk about.
I, I think we've kind of gotten enough.
Six-two, the original started with the six-two policy problem, right? That's how it originally started.
Right. And we've got documents that I think you guys had at the board. Was not aware of that piece being missing. The things I reviewed in the folder, it looked like all of that was there, because someone gave me their folder, actually.
Something? As, that's why, that's what was related to me, is that there was, that one piece was missing.
I guess the way I took it was, is that it was [BLEEP]. It didn't have to, that the balance had to come by the end of the school year. I don't remember a specific reference as to what that balance was, just that in order to meet the policy, it had to be fulfilled by the end of the school year.
That had.
Oh, well, they did. It was a short story.
They never came, they don't never found it.
But they never told [BLEEP].
It's kind of like they found it. I had to see the copy then, and I asked for it as well. So, after Erica talked about it in her meeting that night, she, and I said, that was in the discussion we had about the horses, leave, see, you're trying to catch up now after the fact, and that article is not still to the station, um, to what the balance piece was. It's never been brought up. None of this.
There was a balance piece though?
There was, there was a balance piece. We never seen the balance.
So, and thus the issue.
For the department, yes, it was done. We just don't know what it was, or I don't remember.
We received, for the English department, we never seen it. We asked her.
Well, it's an important piece, if you ask me. The balance piece? Yes. Jim's just stepped out to get her. Okay. And because I honestly thought that was the piece, I mean, I thought everything had been received by the component.
We didn't receive it, no. We asked for it that night.
And then our four didn't take it, right?
No, four didn't.
However, it also goes back to the fact that the policy wasn't violated in terms of what Nick and Tim Schiff had come to the conclusion originally, per the way the policy is written, because the book was not about the content. The book was about the literary analysis of it.
It was very gray in that statement by Tim, and that was, that's what he said was inconclusive. And I just felt that it was strong, I shouldn't say, I never felt that it was a strong argument to say that it was not broken. And neither today, they both said in their statement in that form, or in that paper, that there is information that could show that it's broken, and that any waiver said it wasn't. So, there was two points in that document.
Right. It's not even that it was inconclusive. However, it wasn't outright broken. It just wasn't conclusive.
It's, it's only interpretation, how you want to read it, and that's what divides everyone. So, it's interpretation. So, my interpretation is it was broken, and I've been very vocal since, it's a time really, but since I got the board, I feel that this book doesn't mean, there was no balance, and it does, it did raise six-two, and I feel that it's not a piece of curriculum that we should be using. I think we can find another curriculum that is less inconclusive, less.
Curriculum or literature?
Literature, that literature. We can find a different literature that does the same thing without the controversy that would cause this sparring. It takes away from learning. It takes away from, you have the parents talking about this, your parents talking about that. There's other books out there that can do the better.
I know.
Even, even as a board, we said it was inadvertently controversial. We're still, we, we said it's controversial. Yes, it is. So, it's controversial, and we're breaking our own policy. Because we said it's controversial. So, thus.
But that wasn't the purpose of the book. That wasn't the purpose of reading of the book. The purpose of the book was to meet the literary analysis piece of the curriculum. They weren't reading the book to analyze the, was there systemic racism? Is that true, yes or no? That wasn't the purpose of reading the book. If the conversation goes that way, that's the inadvertent part. So, the book wasn't introduced to the students in order to break policy or fulfill that section. It wasn't to talk about a controversial topic. It wasn't a poly sci. It was English. I mean, we talked about this before, because it was down the same road as the nineteen eighty-four, as Romeo and Juliet. All of these have controversial topics.
But if you're trying to have a, if you're trying to have a, a book that tried, tried to commit somebody to something, there are many other books, I mean, to be, even something trying to convince somebody to buy a dish.
By that point, you're going to be getting rid of hundreds of books, hundreds of books, if not thousands. So, the point is, and I've talked to the instructor who taught this course, what was the methodology for how it was being taught? It was about being able to read context critically. It wasn't about indoctrination or anything like that, or to stir controversy. It was simply to say, here's a text, do you agree or disagree with how the author makes his argument? Is it effective? Is it ineffective? How is that argument made? And that's exactly what we need to have our students be able to have those skills and strengths before they go to college, so they can do the same thing at college, and they're not already behind.
I think this enters a couple of different things, right? One, are we trusting our educators to educate properly? Like, you, as a board, they need to know that we have their backs. Also, we've already come out with a decision, so now are we going to roll back our own decision? We're at the, we're knocking on the door to the first day of school, and go back to all of our, the board training we just had. Is this a need problem? Are we serving all of our stakeholders by all of this effort from [BLEEP] perspective? I mean, I think we have a lot of things that we have to kind of dive into.
Yeah, I don't think it's being brought up because it's a need problem, because I think there was, I think for us as individuals, we're speaking on behalf of our constituents. I think that's what it boils down to, is not it being a need problem. So, that's my stance on it.
Our, our original decision forced the teachers to go ahead and teach two books.
Right.
To have them teach.
As a book.
It enforced them, and the student chose not to read Just Mercy. I mean, I don't, I also know a handful of students who very much enjoyed the book.
They had to be prepared for two books. And that's, that's the direction that we, we basically told the teachers to go. I mean, this book is, is not being banned. It's still available in libraries. It could be in library that, that student can read that book, it's just not going to be part of, a main part of the curriculum.
I understand the point about this particular book, an ever-exercising book, and that whole thing. But then my question is, is where does that end? When does the next book come, and all of a sudden now that's going to the library, it's not going to be taught with class? What does the next one have? The next, my point is that this is.
We pick the books now, we just pick the whole book.
My point.
So, we pick the books.
Now, we don't pick all of them.
My point is that.
We pick all the books. So, then just the examples, we just picked the book, didn't we just approve the book last two months ago?
A whole textbook, yeah. But we're not picking every book that they've read, and even.
My point is that.
You're saying one point, or you're trying to take one point, but we have the vast ability to help with that, support that, and whatever the community needs. And the problem is that we're taking this and taking it to, if you want to say a need problem, or a read problem, or however that is, but at the end of the day, is the student getting the lesson out of it, or are we using that in a different way? If it's rhetorical analysis, that's great. I think that everyone should have, you should defend your position at any point and any time after researching the topic. But we got to make sure the topic that we're using for the rhetorical, rhetorical analysis is the proper one, because if the teachers are all on it to slide, and it's slippery slope is happening, and we're getting into that, which you call, don't use your word or someone's words, indoctrination, we can't have that, whatever side of the fence you're on. We have to use the curriculum and the book to make a positive outcome, so they understand what the rhetorical analysis actually means and how to actually use it, because it's very easy for someone to take that topic and spin it to whatever fuel they have on either side of any fence. So, I understand, we have to be very careful on the book, and we have the opportunity to get a better book that might narrow that scope for them to work on rhetorical analysis, learning versus a topic that's very, very embedded in our society right now, that turns it into that discussion we might not want to have in an English class, in a poly sci, want to do that if you want to go in sociology, sure, let's talk about it there, not in English. We're trying to teach them how to write and how to analyze data, analyze literature. So, that's my point.
Even when Jason and I met with the previous union president, she's like, why are you putting extra work onto my teachers? Just pick a book. Get rid of the book, if you want to get rid of the book, just pick, you know, just tell us. And that's, that was our move.
Absolutely.
I just think it's, talk about slippery slope, I think it's a slippery slope in the other direction, in that it sets precedent for, all right, well then, what's the next book that comes in that parents don't like, and it's not being used in the manner of the way many people might think this one has been used? I mean, when do we, when does this stop? And to that, union president, that sets a horrible precedent for supporting the faculty who selected this book in the first place.
I think this book, I mean, if we, we've talked about balance and just giving a separate thing of literature to give the balance, but I think in this book, if you go ahead and say, all right, we're going to go ahead and give a spectrum, okay? The book, hopefully the book that people read, right down the middle, where you got the same amount on the left side of the book, the same amount on the right side, then you can have equal interaction between the two. This book is probably seventy-five percent leaning in one direction, twenty-five the other, and it just, the people that are at the twenty-five get slammed.
Sure.
By the seventy-five, we need a book that not just gives balance, you know, but gives balance for this. People can choose both sides equally.
If I were recreating that assignment, I would do exactly what you just said. Two books, which I'm fine with, maybe Just Mercy, maybe something else that balances or shows the other, and they use, and then do exactly what the instructors did, what's great about this argument? What's effective? What's ineffective? What's great about this argument? What's effective? What's ineffective? So, that I'd be for, as opposed to just saying, we're just not going to teach the book anymore. It's only going on the library shelves. So, so the group was aware, the second book after this board voted to have the two-book option, they were leaning towards a book called The Last Lecture. Yeah. I think, is that Mitch Allen, maybe?
It's, uh, no, it's not Mitch Allen. It's, it's similar to, the name escapes me, actually was a professor.
He's a professor, he was, yeah, he was.
He was terminally ill, yeah.
And so, they were leaning in that direction, and then when I had the conversation with David and said, you know, what would it be? It's going to be one book, and that's when they said, well, we'd have to go back and bring, take a look at that and put some PD money. So, just letting you know that they had selected, I believe, that secondary book already, and that's what it was, was called Last Lecture.
I read, I think, the other.
Outside of Rachel, I'm assuming when you said the capacity, you talked to Rachel. So, outside of her, has there been, has Tony given feedback on the second book? Has the English department given feedback on, or any kind of pushback on the second book? I mean, it sounded like, if they already got something chosen, they've either accepted that they are, how do they feel about two? What has been the, the feedback there? Is any?
That's me, you're saying, we had not heard a issue about, you know, two books, two books, as you said, are used commonly, yeah, two books, it could be one, because they're not really looking at the literature of the book, they're looking at the topics. And at the end of the school year, evidently there was, they shared to, it was a counterbalance, for lack of a better word, via the kind of, uh, policy. It's something that we done at the end of the year, they did use Ampson Hunger Games, Ant with Diners, Ant with Diners, Antiguan? Or I said that wrong?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. I know I said it wrong. Um, and they not, did it, it wasn't a, it wasn't a Just Mercy and then the book, it was the topic, the topic. You understand? So, I don't know, they, they are prepared for a second book right then?
They were, in fact, I've been coming in with, with Erica, but yes, I had a brief, I thought we were going to be over there, I had to get seven copies of the last lecture. Yep.
Last lecture was written, I, gentleman, finished it after they got it.
I misunderstand. I don't agree with everything in Just Mercy by any means. Like, that would have been a book I selected as an instructor of that course, not by any means. But I think the point is, is the bigger picture. Like, if you get rid of this book, then what's the next book? And what's the next book? And that's, that's not our jobs. That's not our jobs as parents. As parents, what is, you know? What's that?
Answer, what if, what if the next book? I mean, who knows?
Well, you know, we're, we're talking about this. You have to keep in mind, I'm an English.
Sure, no, that's my job, right?
But my point is, when I, when I think about books that need to not be in classrooms, I always think, is it age appropriate? Yes, no? Is it pornographic? Yes, no? There are certain things that, yeah, should not be in classrooms. I don't think this meets that criteria, though, in my mind. The only way I would know that this book is lopsided.
Oh, it's definitely lopsided, there's no question.
You know, where seventy-five percent of the people that are reading the book, they're going to jump on one side.
Right. I understand that.
Because it's, it's so far out of the realm of reality.
So, so having it lopsided like that, I, I would, I would much rather appreciate something that, that sits a little more, a little more midline.
Okay.
All right? And it's not so lopsided that the, the group of people that decide to jump on the one side, the twenty-five percent side, don't get, um.
Slack will better with bullying.
Yeah. I just think, I just think. You know, where, where during the interaction, that if, if somebody makes a statement on one side, it, it's too controversial, in this day and age, it's too controversial.
I just think it's all about how it's taught. Is it taught to show this side, and that's all it did? I don't believe that was the case. I believe the purpose of this assignment was to say, here's a, here's an author who gives these facts. Do you agree with how he presented his argument? Not what his argument was, but how he presented it.
Okay. So, how many years, how many years have you taught?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three years, okay. Set, first, second year teacher, could you do that? Because that's what a lot of our, I mean, we, we just hired us a hundred, we decided to do our teachers, but.
A hundred and ten teachers last year. But the point is, wasn't this an upper level class, which was taught by an instructor who has fifteen, fifteen plus years of experience, I believe?
It's not dishonest, it's how everybody's.
Everyone is, so, English.
It's everybody.
Sophomore.
Sophomore, sophomore. So, this is every sophomore that goes through, and I, I just think it's, it's too, too hot, too hot this day and age. I would say back in two thousand eighteen, this book had been fine.
I, I read, I read the book, I wanted to get a copy. I figured I better know what we're talking about. And to me, the book is chaotic, because it's not just about the story. It's, it's a story, and then all of a sudden, the next chapters are something totally different. Back, now, now you're back into the original story of Walter, who's on death row. Now, you're into the next set of, of other stories, which are about a teenager who threw, uh, just to be funny, threw, you know, a firearm into his friend's house, ended up killing two, you know, his friend and his brother, and, and what's maybe, you need to have mercy on this person, but yet there's a family that will never have enough kids again. So, there's no balance in the book, because it's like, you need to give mercy to this teenager who's on, who's in jail, because, well, they're a teenager. That doesn't, you know, there's another side of the whole entire story here that never presented, and when you talk about facts, the facts are not presented in the book, and so you can get to the very end when it says, oh, I quoted, this quote comes from there. So, you've gone through this as a story, and everything here is supposedly fact, but it's only the citations that are at the very end. It's a different way of citing a book. You know, usually, you, you make a claim, you have a citation, you know, number one, whatever footnote, where did that, where did that information come from? That's not there. It's just saying that it, it, it says, this is it, this is true, this is, and then when you get to the very end, oh, here are my citations. It's different, it's chaotic, it's, I, I feel that it's a long book. I really do, just.
I appreciate you wrote the book. Thank you. I mean, obviously, coming in here, it's good to know the topic. However, I think you missed the whole point of the assignment. It's rhetorical analysis. It is literally analyzing the text to see how the author is relaying the events to meet the need. It has nothing to do with the topic. It has nothing to do with the chaos. It has nothing to do with the balance of, of, of the mercy or no mercy. It is specifically rhetorical analysis. Sean, being an English professor, does, in your professional opinion, does, would this book meet the assignment, like the curriculum, what the curriculum says?
Yeah. It meets it and goes beyond, because it does exactly what you didn't like about it. What you just said about it is what a teacher would want their student to respond to.
That's chaotic.
That it's chaotic, that it doesn't make sense, that this argument doesn't, that it lacks purpose, it lacks focus, that it lacks a counterbalance. That's exactly, the way you describe it there, is exactly if I was the teacher teaching it, I would want my student to come up with those responses, regardless of the controversy of the issues that's in it, but how that argument is made. Everything you just said is a perfect response that I would ask a student to put into an essay to describe how poorly written this book is.
Unless you're fifteen, and you take the side that is chaotic, and you don't believe any of the words should take place, and the seventy-five percent of the kids in the classroom jump on you because you're a fifteen-year-old kid, and you're afraid to open your mouth because you're being stifled because of the topics going on in society today.
I understand your point.
That's about context, though, right? That's, that's.
You're the teacher, I understand your point, but if the teacher was doing his or her job properly, and I don't know if he was or was not in the classroom, because we went there, but yeah, that teacher wouldn't allow those things to happen. And you get back to the point of what are we trying to teach with this book? Not about the content, but about how it was written, how effectively, how ineffective.
This, this might be a great college book.
It would be a great college book.
But for a fifteen-year-old kid, who's just trying.
That's been into his skin, right?
And trying to get along with everybody else that are in the hallways. That I think, I think it's, it's too controversial.
It could cause division. But now you're a class that has a vision, you know?
I mean, we're trying, we're trying to bring a group of students together to interact peacefully across the board, and we've had, we've had a nice knife incidents, and we've had some other incidences at the schools, the dad's book, and I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that this book is controversial to, to an extreme.
And to Sean's point, where does it end? I mean, every topic, so you're saying this is the controversial topic. What is the controversial topic of next week? What is the controversial topic of next month? Are we going to pull Romeo and Juliet because we've got teen sex, we've got suicide? I mean, where does it end?
That's my concern.
And I have information on the last lecture here.
What was the author?
Randy Ouch. And what it basically, let me give you a little ten-second synopsis. So, your world. A lot of professors give talks titled "Last Lecture." Professors are asked to consider their demise and what matters most to them. And while they speak, when they speak, audiences can help them all the same questions. So, this gentleman is a professor at Carnegie Mellon, was asked to do such lecture. However, right after he was asked to give a lecture, he was diagnosed with, um, terminal cancer. So, he was actually giving his last lecture, and it wasn't about dying, it was about what's important to overcome obstacles, enabling the dreams of others, seizing every moment, because this is your time, and you may find out one day that you have less time to think. It's a summation of everything Randy had come to believe in his life. In this book, the author combines humor, inspiration, intelligence that made his lecture a phenomenon and gave, and then performed. The book was then shared with generations to come. What he says is, we cannot change the character, we're dealt with just how we play the hand. That's what that book's about. So he, you can have people laugh at professors like, this is my last lecture that I do. He was asked to do it. Then he found out he had terminal cancer, truly gave him his last lecture and he really delved into it. And then you're, okay, you finished the book.
He did not, that's why.
And then it's not finished before him.
Did a costume or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a terrific book. It's a terrific book. It's, it's, it's something I would want my students to read for sure. Because there's some tremendous life advice and things like that. I don't think that that's one that would counterbalance anything with this other book. If I were the instructor of that course.
But that wasn't the intent of the second book. It was in lieu of Just Mercy. If the student wants it and is not comfortable reading Just Mercy, they have the option.
Right. Yes, what I'm saying is I don't think that that's a book that has statistics and other information that's going to.
I think, I'm sorry, Phil, I know two things I said and I mispronounced, but two things that were going to counteract racism or whatever. And then this is just, if there's two books, right?
Yes.
What is the, what is the rubric, what are they trying to accomplish by having Just Mercy?
I don't have to see, I don't have to see the rubric.
I mean, what are they trying to accomplish? I mean, if they're saying that they're accomplishing that with, with that book, with Just Mercy, I wanna know what.
It was a rhetorical analysis part of the curriculum for English.
When this was approved, when it was brought to the board?
What is it?
I'm sorry, when was it approved? Uh, okay, the date, it came through the board three or four years ago.
Since 2018?
It was 2018.
Um, I'll get it up.
I think it was prior to George Floyd.
It was.
It was one of those books that we approved. Did we approve?
Yeah.
Oh wow, right?
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. No, no, the sponsor's trying to give some facts here, you know, cause I think the dots looking backwards. But so, the, the way that it appears to me is that it cleared the hurdles of more approval. Um, I'm gonna try to pull up the actual, um, the actual, uh, document that came with the board.
Well, you have to keep in mind it was approved, not because it was controversial, but because of the way it was supposed to be taught. And the content of the assignment of how it was supposed to be used.
Understood, I'm just saying that the question was opposed to me by Leslie, that we're gonna approve every book, but this is one of the books that we approved. So there are books that we approved, there are books that come to us and board and approve these books based on the information.
Yeah, this was, this was one of them, yeah.
Okay.
To your point, yes. But yeah, but yeah, we have to also, to Leslie's point, let the instructors have the freedom to do so at certain times.
To your point, yeah. My, my point is, I mean, it was a voted book, just like we did.
As it was, I believe it was.
It was, I've seen it, I've got so many things that have come through this, this email. I'm not a good, I'm not great with Google.
I don't know all the, Sean is here and I defer to.
How many books have you approved in like six years on the board at Thomas?
So you're right, the board does approve books, typically there's a whole curriculum process that goes through and they bring it to you for review for third things.
And you have to.
Typically it's like.
Right. And you have to also keep in mind that.
Why would it be approved?
Every book is approved.
Every book.
Every book.
And think about it.
First thing about.
Every book. Yes. Yeah. Every book that goes through gets put on the slide.
In thirty days.
And.
That's, that's what.
And here's, here's the thing, let's be really honest. Do I read every book, every textbook, everything that comes on the slide? I don't have time for that. So my point is, we have faith and trust in, in the curriculum, uh, the department heads and everybody who puts these forth. And if, but if they're out there and there's not like huge discrepancies from parents who wanna read it while it's on display? Sure, I'll, I'll be the first to say, I write every book by not, not even mean, not even.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, when that, when that book was approved by the board, it was approved by the board, um, probably because it was appropriate during that time. I'm telling you.
All right, so let's just say this.
You know, like even if. Nothing's, nothing's been taught, that book has never been taught. And they're saying, hey guys, this is the book we wanna add to our curriculum. And then we got, it's put on, everybody looks at it for a month, right? And then now it's time to vote for it, we're looking at it. And I'm saying it's too controversial for the, for what's happening outside these walls. For what's happening in, in pretty much every city right now. It's too controversial. So, so now we have, we have the ability to go ahead and, and right the ship and then get something in there that is appropriate for what's happening this day and age.
Of course, we always have the ability to do that.
So moving forward, are we gonna, are we going to, uh, where does this, where does it end? I mean, I think that's what you said, where, where does it end? Okay, well, if the next book comes through and nobody has a problem with it, it rolls through.
But where does the ship wrong? Where does the data show us the ship, what makes the ship wrong?
I don't know.
Well, where is this series of our.
Just be honest, I just thought it doesn't make it wrong.
I just go ahead and, and let you know, I, I am an employer of several high school kids and I've asked each one of them, what did you think about this book? And not all of them, some of them said, ah, it's fine. It's fine, but the, the ones that gave me some feedback back was like, that book, by, by having an opinion in class about that book, I got obliterated by some people that never even spoke in class. Never even had an opinion one way or the other. But it gave them the confidence by this book to go ahead and backlash back on whatever they had to say because they were a part of the seventy-five percent that this book supports, that this, this book highlights.
Sounds to me then, that it was an instructor error to allow that to happen.
I'm saying that, that could be part of the case.
If an instructor gets it to a point where it becomes contentious, then you need to back off. Because that's not what the instructor, the original intent of the assignment was to be. It's not open, hey, it's not, it's about asking the right questions. The right questions would be, what did you think about the authors? How the author created this book? Is it an effective, ineffective argument? Not, what did you think of it? I looked, if you ask somebody, if you ask a kid, what did you think of it? Yeah, then you're gonna get contentious. And that's a problem. So if that actually happened the way you described, and it sounds like it did, then it's on the instructor for not handling the classroom in a disciplined way, it's a hurt classroom process. It's not about the book, it's about the, the instruction.
I looked at the PowerPoint, I looked at the presentations, I looked at the materials that they ended up giving us in that brown fat, brown packet. There was a lot of really good material in there. There was a lot of really good, uh, thought that these teachers put into to really develop it, right? And.
I think so.
And I think, I think they probably did probably even better job after they got under, under fired on that this book was a controversial book. And there, so, yeah. Yeah, they probably really ramped it up, which they have their capability. Now we know what their capabilities are, they really do a really good job. I think they can do a great job with this book that's not as controversial.
Okay, so the proposal was February of twenty-one.
Which was after.
Floyd. It came from a doctor named Bob Michael. And it was from the English two course team. Alex Bola, Eric Pierce, Michelle Ever, Tom Rameer, Jose Romero, Megan Stephen, and Sophie Long.
Stephen.
Stephen?
True Stephen.
Okay. And they cited the unit of study, the rationale. It seems like a pretty detailed book selections. Book selections for English two, English two honors summer curriculum team vetted several titles for choosing this. This book matched all the criteria appropriate rigor, content which allows for rich discussion and connected outside ratings, high interest for readers and a suitable length. In this adapted, this is not, this is the young adult version, by the way. In this adapted young adult version, the author uses experiences as a lawyer and social justice activist who shared with young reader from American history, poverty, incarceration and racial injustice. While his experiences drive his narrative, he narrows in on the vital lesson that each of us is more than the worst thing we've ever done. And they use persons characters defined by how we treat those who are mistreated. Through the use of his personal experiences, the experience of those he has represented in factual information about the justice systems in our country, calls each young reader to see that mercy is empowering and transformative when it's directed at the most undeserved. See this as justice, fairness, respect, quality of mercy. I'll give you an accurate, well researched connection to the injustice that impact those impoverished people of color. It gives a student success piece to it. Partnership, it goes for all the board committees, how, how it relates to partnerships with the whole community. Says the text provides students and parents and the community not to engage in meaningful inquiry to social constructs and issues that are relevant to today's world, there are also opportunities for teachers to include community members and guest speakers who have experiences related to justice, social justice, police officers, attorneys, and juvenile offenders. Community, let's see.
So it was about content then?
Absolutely, yeah. I hear it worded what else is once.
It's waiting right there, I mean, it's.
Well, I think, but I'm only reading, I'm reading very small excerpts. I think that to see what was done, it does appear that it talks about the Illinois teaching standards, cultural responsive teaching and learning standards in alliance with the teaching standards in the state of Illinois. So I know that new board members didn't see this. Um, but this appears to me to be what it talks about. Socially global, responsible, analytical, engaging learning opportunities require critical thinking skills as they analyze the author's themes, purpose and techniques. Students will explore other forms of literature, though through comparative analysis to enhance their exposure to a broad spectrum of learning experiences. Creative, adaptive, um, independent, collaborative. So, as I said, this is probably a six-page, this is a six-page proposal. It came through from the team to Nick when he was in his previous role.
What year was that, what year?
Twenty-one.
Oh, twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So, yeah, so it came through, yeah, February of twenty-one, which for me, it was probably starting to be read, I'm guessing, twenty-two. Cause if it came through February twenty-one, I guess twenty-two is probably the first tree.
My daughter knows the sophomore.
She's been in, she's been in two years.
Last year in the.
Late fall of twenty-two?
Two years.
Yeah.
Two, three, three, what are we in?
Twenty-three, two-four. You know, and it is quite possible, one question I've never asked is, was this utilized in any other English course prior to sophomore range? It's quite possible it was, if other people had read it. So, um, I mean, I, I could certainly forward this to you guys if you would like to see at least the rationale. I don't know if it's going to change any minds or not, but I just, you know, that's part of the reason why I didn't send out the full group because I think you guys saw a lot of the assessments already. And at the last meeting, you were very complimentary of some of the depth of the work that was done. I think you just mentioned that.
Right, I think you did a great job of that.
And Darren mentioned the same thing, there was parts that could do it. So really what it comes down to is, um, you know, this is, this is a book that's been utilized and sometimes you can, you can base the best books or best, anything you use based upon the amount of conversation it generates. You know, and if it's about a literary analysis, you know, it really comes down to who's leading it. And I, and I think some of our second year teachers could probably lead a lot better than some of our twenty-year veterans. Based upon my experience, not here, I'm talking about elsewhere.
Possibly, yeah.
Right, and so, you know, it doesn't mean if you're a brand new teacher, you can't do this, but maybe.
I didn't mean to state.
I know which one's in my. I knew exactly which one, because we have a lot of younger teachers, I know exactly which one. But sometimes I think those folks do a little bit better, um, cause they're a little bit closer in age maybe. And, but they also rely upon those veterans to help them with some controversial issues when it comes down to, how do you delicately get through this, you know? So, you know, all I'm trying to do is present you guys with the information. You know, you know what our recommendation was last, last meeting? Um, you know, I think that we've got great teachers, if they have to, they could come up with a suitable replacement. I do think it, it might cause some angst, um, in terms of, for getting into that level. Um, but that being said, you know, that's not a surprise to you guys, everyone knows. You know, I know that we're gonna get in front of the board, the staff on the twenty-second and say, hey, we support you and this might be something that kind of illustrates, illustrates we took action, but now. I just, you asked Jim and me to be very, very honest enough around you guys. And that's what I'm just trying to present all of these things. I'm certainly not pointing fingers saying you're right, you're wrong. I'm trying to be as objective as I can be and just say that when I see this coming from the English team, I don't know these individuals, but, um, I think there's a.
So we have, we have two actions. Well, we have, we either have one action or we have nothing. So the action, the action is that we determine whether or not we're going to remove Just Mercy from the curriculum, but keep it within, keep it in the, uh, in, in our library. We use as a secondary source, you know, students can go, not give it to the library. So we have, we have that action to determine whether or not we are going to, well, are we gonna take that action? So here, within, within here. What's it?
That could be a possibility too.
I'm sorry. So then, I, are you saying for here?
Yeah, there is an option. There's a way you can also say.
No, that's for out.
You go public.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not in here.
Yeah, okay.
Uh.
Probably.
Do we take a vote in here? Also, you can.
I mean, it's non-binding.
It's not, but I mean, you can, not binding, right? You, you can't like vote and put it to the record, we voted. You know, I mean, you can get a strong poll like here, but the other option I just threw out, just the conversation piece, is that, um, we move that the Just Mercy, we move it as mandatory, mandated, what did I say?
Manded. Uh, managed.
I can't even.
Let me move into the book Just Mercy, next we use as a mandated book within the curriculum, method used as a supplemental read.
So if, you know, if they want to get the library and they want a kid wanna read it, you can.
Or if you have some, this also, some of our English courses have reading choices. Here is the approved list of books that you can read for these units. And, you know, it might, you know, appear on that. This is a mandatory read, right? Um, but there are some that can remain as a supplementary read in another course.
So move it as a mandatory read, that seems like, but I thought I heard the board wanted it. Maybe I'm wrong. I thought the move of some board members, some board members. I think I heard some board members said they wanted to move it to a mandatory read. Some board members wanted to keep the status quo, which is too. Right? The third option is move it as a mandatory, keep it as a supplementary read if the students choose, not choose to read it there, but if, if, if the teacher says, um, this month is a choice on these topics. And they list the bottom, which it looks like, if you pass a read, it's not mandated.
So is there, is there an additional option where it would be that it's in the library and recommended, but it's not a supplementary?
Yes, very, yes, you could do that.
I wonder if further.
That's, that's going.
Right, so there's your steps.
Yeah, so I'm trying to throw, right, I'm throwing a maybe a tag. Just throwing a step or that.
That's good.
Just throwing another step in there for conversation. I think if you say, if you go to that last step, you could, library only, it still could be an optional book, you could even go to the library again. But if he or she ever goes is there. I don't.
Jimmy, you know what, what I, if I were making this assignment, I'd have like five books.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Not just one, like five. Because you have all different races, ethnicities, genders in your class, so on and so forth. Choose five, let this be one as a supplement, not mandated, but supplemental. And if a kid wants to read this particular book for this particular assignment.
Right, their choice.
Their choice, well, again, again, it all comes down to how the assignment is done. It's not an opinion piece, it's a rhetorical analysis which, which teaches the kid to look how to understand arguments. And if you're doing that right in the classroom as an instructor, then this, then who would even be having this conversation? But whoever this instructor was or however it got it to the point where you're talking, where these kids were being contentious and there was conflict, that's a problem, right? But if you've got a class of twenty-five kids and they have a choice of five different books, you're gonna maybe get three or four that might read that book, maybe none, maybe eight, ten, who knows? But at least keep it an option for if a kid wants to read that.
Sean, but our, our task at hand, which I, I think we're seeing eye to eye a little better now. Our task at hand is this is a mandatory book, this is what everybody was reading.
So then is it removing all mandatory books for this part of the curriculum? Not announcing a mandatory book?
It sounds like they were gonna put this.
No, they were offering another one.
They were offering the last lecture as a quick kind of.
Alternative.
Alternative, because you guys voted to have a choice.
Right.
And they were looking initially at last lecture. I think since that time, they wanna dig deeper and it may not be the last lecture, it's a secondary book. As at the last meeting we were at, it, it was last lecture, I've been texting and they're like, they wanna, they wanna look a little deeper. So it's clear that they know that there's a second book option had to come up. As of right now, as it stands, immediately right now.
Right.
I don't think the last lecture is even on the.
I don't either.
Whatever I thought I understood.
I don't either, but I think they're trying to get a mix that is representative of the student body.
Right, right, right.
And more current.
If there are, in that case.
I think that has a mandatory read.
I just think if it's a mandatory read and everybody's forced to read this book, I think it's too hot, too hot, like I mentioned, too many times.
That's a concession.
What if the word mandatory is removed and it could still be recommended by the teacher of the course with these X, Y and Z options, whether it's two books or five books? It's still there, it's the recommended, this is gonna meet the needs of the assignment best. However, here are alternatives.
I would use the word suggested.
I agree, I think, I agree, I think, oh, five books should be suggested.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Right, it's, it's literary analysis time, kids. Here are the titles to choose from, go into your groups, read the book, come back and do the same.
Hundred percent.
That's right.
I'm not, I just.
I am.
No, no, not really, Leslie. Look, they're having a difficult time right now picking a second book. Can we get that, can we get a?
Yeah.
Please.
I think for.
That's, that shouldn't be that hard to pick.
I think we can.
More higher.
I think the immediacy.
He's got it.
We currently, we currently have a two-choice option. One being Just Mercy, one being whatever book they select.
Agreed.
They've said that they're thinking last lecture, they're thinking upon further thoughts since they have until about December. We've told, we've told David that he's the free of some professional development money to allow these folks to go in and dive in and select a second book if last lecture, because they didn't seem very crazy about it. That being said, so.
I'm so sorry, but we interrupted each other all time before. We have, since we have to send, you're a hundred percent correct. I think, yes. Yeah, that's my, that's my intern. We have to, to the summer, and I agree, Sean, they can get multiple, take the word mandatory off, you say, there's a suggested book to meet the purpose of the lesson.
Absolutely.
Of rhetorical, you're talking about, to meet that, you can have multiple books to meet that. The purpose is the rhetorical, um.
Analysis.
Analysis, that's the purpose.
Absolutely.
That's more important than what it is to get there, to meet that multiple books that can meet that need of rhetorical. That's the stuff, that's the thing they need to, they do need to understand that as every high school.
And the instructors also need to understand that if, if one of the suggested books is a highly controversial book, like this one is, then you have to ensure that you're teaching in the right manner, it's not about a student's opinion. It's about your opinion of what the author does effectively or ineffectively.
It's your analysis.
With the argument.
Yes. And, and these assignments should take pro and con. Some kids say, I'm supportive of the author's argument for this, but I disagree with the author's argument for this.
Exactly, and that's what.
So nice of you to show them, right?
Right, so I mean, I, as a history teacher, I talk about that, my coverage is so rich. When I, yeah, reading through the jungle, the different books we read.
Exactly. Jungle, Lord of the Flies, I mean, you can go down and list anything that happens.
And we, no, so we would have controversial issues in history all the time, but it was never, this is the one, there's ways to get those points across.
I guess I, I just don't understand that if a teacher's teaching the book and you got, everybody's read a different book, then how do you have the interaction if everybody's on a different page of what's?
There's ways to do that, you can do it in small groups.
They're doing it now.
Yeah, I mean, I felt bad last time saying, all right, you're going to do two books, you know, I thought, you know, I was going to have another teacher.
Well, we will.
But we'll hear about that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Then of course.
You're, you're. So just, just get rid of that book and get something else, and then you can focus all your attention on that different book.
They're probably never going to get a book. It's hard to have a book if you're doing something like this kind of a topic. A lot of times there's multiple reads, and history, we do, I mean, history teachers, we use, there's multiple reads and you're talking about issues, like, you know, so, right, because it can be all at one way, whatever way, right?
Right, you're right, there are kids in class with a very different thought process.
A reconstruction.
Good teacher is going to be able to, in the under and work through that.
I mean, I think the teacher's going to be mad at us for, for getting rid, getting rid of the book, because they put an awful lot of work into it, the material, they're going to be mad at that. Then if we say, all right, well, that's still going to be around, but we got this book, and then possibly whatever, we've got a lot now. You've got your classroom, which is three times what's going here, and a couple of them read this book, and some read this book, and some, you know, it just seems like if we have a mandatory, if we're talking mandatory, that's a month and a half worth of instruction. That let's give them one thing that they can focus on, do a really good job, and then on the other side, they can go ahead and do supplemental reads, just.
So that, in terms of what the motion says, takes it off the mandatory, puts it on supplemental read if necessary.
Supplemental reads, fine, I think we just put the wording down that way.
I think it, it's.
And I'm going to go a step further. I think after all of this, what's going on with our community, I'd be very surprised if any teacher even wants to tackle that book.
Could be wrong.
Just one.
Would, would we put something on there like seek, seek a do mandatory book?
Unless they're looking for a fight, you know what I mean?
I think all we're concerned with is this one.
I think, I think what we should do is stick to a little bit more of what we're in here for.
I agree.
We're here for this.
I don't think we can play the what ifs and none of that, but I agree. I think we need to stick in here, okay, why do you?
So.
I agree with you.
So then, what you wrote, uh, is, I move that the book Just Mercy not to be used as a mandated book within the curriculum, but.
God knows.
But. And.
You use a mandatory book within the curriculum, but.
Rather.
Rather. Rather.
It's clearly rather.
What are you looking at?
Clearly rather.
Okay, I got it. Rather, oh, rather.
Rather.
Yeah, I got it, okay.
Rather, rather being.
You're right.
But rather to use it. So. Would you agree with that, this way it's?
Not as a mandatory, as a supplemental?
Yeah.
I, I think that's a, that's a, I mean, I would rather the book just be on, but I think, I think that's a good alternative.
I would like to move on, but that's the alternative that we come with and stand together on.
What is the, what are we saying is?
That remove it as a mandated text.
To a.
Something else.
Why can't we just stay where we currently are? We came up with this as a board, we came to consensus, Sean wasn't there, but Jason was. Our teachers are aware of it, they are moving the curriculum department, or the English department, the whole high school, they're moving in that direction. The only thing that they're still working, they have a title, they're working on maybe a, a one that is a little more, is a little better to, to suit the purpose of the assignment. But we have a direction, we have a decision that we made.
So let's, to your point, you're saying it's everybody taking off the mandatory.
I'm saying stay where we are.
You guys are.
Because it's not mandatory anymore, because it's two titles?
Is the word mandatory there still? We gave the, the option, I don't even think the word mandatory was written in the second. Right, the two books, it's not even correct, it's not correct.
How many words?
Yeah, I got it. We got to the same spot.
Yeah, we're hearing you saying that it's already no longer mandatory.
Correct.
Because there's a supplemental.
Oh, okay.
It's already mandatory, or it's already not mandatory, because we're giving two options for this, for that assignment.
I'm standing my head. So, so Sean, your take?
Well, correct, help me with the decision that was made on the day that I wasn't there. So you're saying that, no, just for clarity, that it would be one of the two books?
Correct.
I would go further and say make it supplemental, that it's one of the four or five selections. And if it doesn't need to be until December, I think that's very feasible.
Is that a little too difficult for them to come back with them between now and December? Because while they're currently getting ready for school, teaching September, August, or September, August, September, or?
I agree with you.
Stick with the two we have.
That's why you just go to one book.
All we talked about last time was, I think, what you may have said, I'd be interested to see the data on how many kids choose the other book. So come back after the kids have the option for the second book and see what it looks like.
Well, I think that.
While this, I mean, if we're going to be looking at every book from here on out, and that's apparently what we have done in the past. I mean, we look at books that, I mean, we're here for a reason. And our reason is to, to make the, the, the best choice for who we're dealing with, who, who our student constituents.
Constituent.
Constituent, you know, your constituents now, right?
Yeah, our stakeholders are our parents, our teachers, our taxpayers, our kids.
You know, like, I think something mentioned on this is, is, um, having a two, maybe it grows to three, four, or five, maybe some drop off because they find this is better, the kids have really taken to this. I see, look, you guys approve the books, they have to be on display for 30 days for the public to come? And usually, you know, maybe our learning and instruction committee should be, you know, have, have the English teachers for, you know, that are proposing new books, they go through it with the board, you know, and say, this is what we're introducing. Or have our assistant suits come through and say, this is what we have, this is why we're using it. Because as a, as five new board members, maybe you've not seen that before, but that's pretty standard of what happens. Pardon?
They did that with the help.
And they do it with everyone.
Yeah, that every book, by law, by statute, has to be displayed for 30 days, um, before we can order it. So after the 30 day window, we take it through, that's when we can order it, which is why you're getting books in the springtime, so they can order them all in the summertime. But if, if the English books in particular, which in a lot of school districts, they're changing a lot more from fiction to nonfiction and more young adult, because some English departments, at the upper levels, I'm sorry, Sean, um, it can be some really dark and dreary reads, depressing. And districts have moved towards maybe more things that are current and modern, that, that apply and appeal to younger readers. So you're seeing an elimination of a lot of the classics, and we're bringing on, you know, diverse authors, bringing on more books that were, that, that really can appeal to kids now. So you're, to my point on what we're in close session for, is if we are going to offer two, I think that makes neither one, neither of the mandatory.
Right, to me, that makes both of them, or whatever the number is, supplemental.
Right, and this is where we currently are.
Right.
So where, where we started?
I just don't like the highlight on this book.
You don't like it, I'm sorry.
I don't like the highlight on this book, I don't like it being elevated to, to a status that this is one of the major two options that we're going to spend two months on.
Yeah, I don't know how long it is, honestly.
I, you know, but I'm just, I'm just guessing maybe how long it is, you know, where every sophomore is going to read this book. And I, I don't know, I, you know, 2021 was a different board, I don't know if this board was in there in 2020, 2021, would this book have even gotten selected in the first place?
Well, because it does come forward from the English team.
Right.
It doesn't come from the board to them, so.
No, I know.
Yeah, it may have emerged.
It might have emerged, but whether or not that, that board would have said yes to the book, they're, it's different.
So, that being said, your opinion right now is remove the book from the curriculum altogether?
And leave it in the library.
And leave it in the library?
Same.
Same.
Good.
Same.
Keep it where we're at, two books.
The way it's put there, supplemental, not mandatory supplemental.
Okay.
Think of such a precedent, that if you say the book can't be in, that is a very still issue.
Based on one. Can you make it, so I can see what it looks like in your head, is supplemental, what does that mean, is you're, you're the instructor?
It's one of the choices.
It's status quo, wait, it's not.
It's one of the choices, it doesn't have to be fit, it could be chosen, it could be taught, it doesn't have to be taught. But I think, I think you're saying to the teachers, we don't trust you, we don't value you, we don't like the book you've selected.
So what if, what if we vote against a book that they do present to us? Is that saying the same thing?
Again, I think, I think at the high school level, if it's age appropriate and not pornographic, that would be my definition of what appropriate as opposed to inappropriate book would be. Controversial issues are taught, as Jim was saying, in every history, English, social sciences curriculum. And we have to have our students understand what's controversial, whether we agree with it or not, but how is it used in an argument? If that is the way the intended assignment is to be. It's kind of like, well, slavery was incredibly controversial topic.
Controversial indoctrination, in my opinion, is two separate things.
Totally, totally separate. And like, the, the definition of indoctrination is not, is looking at a, a subject or a topic uncritically.
Uncritically.
And that's the exact opposite of the way this assignment was supposed to be done.
Supposed to.
Supposed to.
And then not every student walked out there indoctrinated, no, I mean, and you're saying, everyone is led, is referring to a. Who wasn't comfortable, but how many students walked through and read this book?
Oh, it definitely, it definitely gave some confidence to some kids that, that don't regularly have confidence, that's for sure. Because they were able to say, you know, somebody, they're able to say, you don't really have an opinion on this, because you're not that, you're not that way.
So now what happens when someone walks into science, a science class, and says, none of this can happen because God created the universe, and there's no science? There was no Big Bang, there was no nucleus, the, I'm sorry, well, everything you do at work is a farce, because God created all of this.
You know what?
Now where, where do we start?
That could absolutely happen, that could absolutely happen, you know what? That's not, that's not a mandatory, uh, opinion, that's not something that they're forced to put out on everybody else.
Nobody, there was no opinion, nobody forced an opinion, they were.
They're forced to read this book right now, they're forced to read this book. It's one of two books, it was for a long time, it's only one book.
Last year they were forced to read a book.
Yeah, last year they were forced to read a book, now they.
I thought this changed that.
What's that?
I thought this.
Right.
That does change that, but you know, we have a chance to change it and make it right.
It's not wrong, it's not wrong, there's all, like Sean just said, there's always going to be controversy, everything that's defined is controversial.
We're, we're not always going to see eye to eye on it.
And that's fine.
And, and you know what, sometimes, sometimes you just go and you, you go with what you, you feel is right, you put your vote out there and see what happens.
I don't disagree.
I think we don't work with. So, at this point.
So you've got that motion, Steve?
Uh, I, it's on my computer.
I have it in exact content.
So, um. All right, so then to close the meeting, I mean, are we all good for closing, uh, the session, close session, or do we, do you still want to debate?
Is that the only topic?
So what's the, what's, what happens if we go out there?
So when we go out there, we have the action to, uh, somebody makes a motion on the action that's listed in the executive session. Uh, notes that we have, uh, from the board, where it says, move, uh, move to, I forget.
What is the actual motion?
The motion's out there, it was brought up from our chairman. It was from the last meeting and we.
So one would be to use two books.
But I don't think that's going to be the motion, the motion's going to be.
One use two books and one.
Yeah.
Hey, grab it, so, let's just go over what happens.
Yeah.
Jason, do you have a stepping out?
Wait for Jason to come.
Can I be go get it?
Jason's just left at room 735. Kathy just left at room 735.
We're not going to talk about anything right now until we get back.
Is your music?
Music.
We should second see if the Cubs are winning again, you know, right?
You're the camera.
Yeah, sorry, so sorry.
Kathy, one's got a 736. Mike, are you a minor league baseball fan?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Wow.
Yeah, I think we're over 500 though.
Yeah, just over 16 out of 18 or something?
And we are a fight with anybody.
Trying to manage.
Trying to fight, you're the 80 guy.
Trying. Sorry, we're terrified. We're down.
We're going to be okay.
15.
Yeah, it's going to be. We only scored in seven, eight, and nine.
Oh, we're missing.
Sorry.
Jason back in the room at 737.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so we're all back now, uh, so basically, what was written, uh, here is that, uh, we can make a motion to amend the board's May 22nd, 2023 decision on the UGP appeal and direct the interim superintendents to inform the complainant and accuse, and accuse that Just Mercy by Brian Stevenson may no longer be used as an anchor text to teach the English to unit, but the text will remain available to interested students in the library.
So the word, so you said anchor text, so it was never mandated, was never in the, or mandatory was never in the original curriculum or? Anchor text?
Anchor text is what, it says what our lawyer.
Anchor sounds pretty.
Is that, that's on Steve?
Yes.
And you're. Anchor sounds.
So the other, so the other was to amend, uh, to amend board's May 22nd, 2023 decision on UGP appeal and direct the superintendents to inform the complaint and accuse that data will be collected on the use of Just Mercy by Brian Stevenson versus the alternative offered text during the 2023, 2024 school year, and that the board may reconsider the use of Just Mercy for the following school year based on that data. So basically, status quo is the second one, and if we want to make a change, that's our, that's the first, uh, that I read.
What happened to the?
The third, third is over here.
Oh, I'm sorry, third.
So let me clarify, with that second one, you're saying keep Just Mercy and bring it in all.
No, we're saying, we're saying we can keep the same.
That's currently.
So now he's, and they collect the data, all these students pick that book over Just Mercy.
But basically, would be no action at that point.
Correct, if not, there would be no action.
Uh, then there's the, uh, to move that the book Just Mercy not to be used as a mandated book within the curriculum.
Rather.
Rather used as a supplemental read.
So I would change mandated to anchor and then third one.
Not use as an anchor, and then what, you know, what, what would most likely happen is they would use, it wouldn't be a mandated book, it'd use excerpts, and that's, and that's what seems to go down around the country. They'll use an excerpt with other nonfictional material to get the concept of rhetorical analysis study. But that won't be here, you read this book.
Wouldn't be the entire book, it might be drawing excerpts from book A, B, C, and D.
No, one whole book.
No one was.
No one was, that seems to be what could be done now being August, and this has to be done in December.
It's not written in the curriculum, that's the way.
Does anyone understand this from you, do you understand what I'm saying? Is it, you might, you might, you understand what I'm saying, so the excerpts from multiple reads to get the concept of rhetorical analysis, but not any one book?
And I, and I would say, as, 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 as a college professor, if you're doing rhetorical analysis, that's the way you should teach any rhetorical analysis. Until you get into like a literature class, and then you pick a book, and that's when you want the students, what did you think that the author did as far as characters or plot or, you know, whatever, but, or if it's nonfictional piece, did that, again, did that argument become effective or ineffective and why? So, as, I know you want to get rid of the book as a whole, but I truly believe that if we're doing a service to our students as far as good critical thinkers and being able to analyze rhetorical appeals and, and the way we would want them to do so, then make it available as one of several options, like, just like you said, Jim. Excerpts, excerpts, not the whole book, but, you know, one of the chapters that comes to mind, I don't remember the number, but there was a chapter where, where he was using all these statistics, statistical analysis, that to me, when I read it, I'm like, these just don't make sense, which, and, and exactly the way you described it, is to me, that would be a great student response, because they get that. They understand that this is a faulty argument, it's one of many faulty arguments.
So my correct is saying that it would take away from the context of the book, a more the concept of rhetorical analysis of an excerpt?
I would say.
Yeah, because if you read a book, it's one to one, or if you read an excerpt, you're just dealing with those two, three pages on, on the, on the subject with three or four others, correct, that's what I had, how you do it.
That's how I would do it, yeah, for sure.
So, so in this, we can possibly, oh, amend. Um, to move that the book, just mercy not be used as a, as anchor book or text within the curriculum, but rather used as one, how about one of several.
Suggested reading material.
Yeah, suggested, uh, reading excerpt, excerpts.
Excerpts, that's good.
So it's not a whole text? So, it's not.
So are they gonna say, alright, here's a book, I want you to read chapter two?
No.
No, no, they would supply, get an actual excerpt.
Print out three, four pages, or something, say, read these three or four pages from this book, this book, this book, this book, and we're gonna come back and tell me what you thought about rhetorical analysis of those five.
And most likely, most likely it would be done where an instructor takes a section, quotes, statistics, whatever, and actually probably puts it in a tab machine and says, based on this information, how effective or ineffective is this argument that this author makes? Has nothing to do with the content, it's more about how the information's brought forth and how then it's analyzed. It goes, it goes right to, especially in statistical information, what you would do in a stats class, like, can we read educational statistics and get the information, which is crazy, right? Uh, and get the information out and pull that data so that we're fully understanding it properly.
So then on, what I'm hearing is this is your point, you said it was also less statistical analysis, more important than the subject that's been moved. You know what I mean?
Right.
Because that, if you're really doing rhetorical analysis, you're not worried about the fact that you wish, how is that clear to your analysis? And if you have four or five excerpts, can you do that?
And is our staff prepared for this?
Mike Houston leaving at 7:43.
So.
Let's get to the bathroom. I would, I would probably not, because I have the teachers, I have.
Well, well, I mean, I would.
Yeah, they might.
He's saying, this is, this is.
Yeah.
I can do it in a lesson, right?
It's the other side.
Water, there's not water, no thanks.
I don't have a water. So use as one of several, several excerpts.
Yes, uh, uh, used as. Several supplemental excerpts.
Now, now, we need to, so what else comes in, since it's just an excerpt, they can select whatever they want.
Because it's not. Suggestions that the committee puts forward?
They have a review access.
Yeah.
So, so where they. My question is, Sean, was historically now, if we, we come to this one, where it's supplemental, we have five books, or five books, are you gonna take page 23, 27, 35, 36, whatever, whatever that is, an extra curriculum for the year? Then Erica would bring it back in here and show us the board on what those lessons are, what those curriculum.
How it's gonna be used.
How it's gonna be used and what pretense it's gonna be used and that stuff, so it'd be in front of you, they demo how they're using it. So they're not just saying, okay, it's one of supplemental books, but here, read this, they're not doing that, they're using the way Sean did, where you're taking an excerpt from that book and using that as the rhetorical analysis piece, or the critical thinking piece, or the statistics piece. So you're using a couple pages, but they have to bring that back.
So they have to bring that back?
To us.
That seems, that seems like a lot of management, like overman.
Well, if we're to this point, we know what we want.
Are you saying that's what you want, that's the way it does happen?
Listen, I'm asking if that's how it works, would they, would they come and show us?
Not, not the, not the English teachers, but they would report to Erica, and maybe Erica could tell us how they're gonna use it.
How they're gonna use.
Like an overview of what's happening, this is what's gonna happen.
This is how it's gonna, this is what it's gonna look like for the student. So you, you wanna see what the application is, of whether, how they, how they apply this text? If we choose to go to supplemental.
I'm not sure if every excerpt that teacher throws into the classroom is read for.
No, no, not every excerpt, like if, if they're writing for this assignment, approved book.
Yeah, right.
No, that's what I'm saying, out of the approved books. Just mercy, last lecture.
You're expecting with staff to do what?
Just let, as, as with all the curriculum materials we've seen already, they would report that to Erica and how they're gonna use it. And Erica just informs us.
So it's an information.
Information.
Oh.
It's not a full book though, it's just a.
No.
I don't want them to bring excerpts of everything that.
Oh, that's.
I want them to be able to have some freedom to do it, because we don't need to see it, we just wanna know what, what books they're using. And the excerpts are within those books.
But the excerpts should be from, from books.
From books.
So then we.
Yeah, we don't, I think, I think what you guys are discussing right now is.
You're like we're microorganizing.
I think that's overkill, maybe we want to stay on the balcony.
I mean, next thing you know, we're gonna be asking PE, can they give me a rundown of what policy it's like to?
Yeah, I mean, it is. Alright, so, it seems like this is a no, uh, on that, uh, then I guess we come out and I guess we go and, and, uh, we come out and we say that due to a, a motion as it pertains to the exact session. Because now everyone's having to come out of the exact session with a motion. And there's no motions if you exist, I shouldn't. Right, we don't make a motion here. No, no, here's the motion, you have to hear it in the air, forget it, we'll publish it.
Well, we have to figure out which motion we're gonna go.
Right, right.
So which one did you just say was a no?
Uh, the one to use as one of several supplemental excerpts.
I'm so confused, I thought that's what you were just saying.
Yeah.
Well, that, well, I think, I think the reason that that.
No, I think the only thing that we were saying no to is like Mike was saying, like, we don't need to see all the.
We don't need a micromanagement, we don't need the micromanagement, we just need to have trust and faith that they're gonna do it properly, do the proper thing with whatever.
That's just not right administration, would you agree with that?
Yeah.
It's a supervisory.
Yeah.
So you're.
Alright.
I'll watch these questions.
So we stop our shuffle, what do you think? Before you wanna go?
I still like the first one, and I'd add it as a supplemental. Same opinion?
Status quo, or go with excerpts?
The third chose, excerpts, multiple readings.
First? First? Then, when we come out, we'll, uh, we'll do the first, uh, motion and then take a vote in the session. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, say.
Ah, yeah, I can't. Can we close session?
No. That was a big word. That was a new care.